Right, um, we need to get the money. Unfortunately, the chairman thinks we won't be attending due to operational reasons. So, for us, chairman, do you want your chair meeting?
Yes, we see the power link on the bench. Could I have a proposal for you? Chairman?
Uh, declaration of interest.
Yes.
Yeah?
I had a declaration of interest under listed as other for the Jupins where I can change this number by four. Because I attended as a witness for the people against the development, which means I won't be... I can speak, but I won't be voting on the item and that.
Uh, minutes, confirm the minutes. Six times, senses you're running twenty-five.
Right, so, um...
We were all marching here, wasn't it?
As I say, yeah.
Just the chores.
Yeah.
Was it just?
Yeah, because when they went through it, we were going to...
So, I'd better propose and... Or you can propose and I'll say whatever.
You're good one.
Because nobody else is here. I'll propose.
I'll say.
And then we vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
It's only true.
Right.
Let's go with that.
Declaration of interest, so I'll remember the public, she's got me...
Do you have any question? Do you need to sign that?
Of course. We tell you again what to do.
It's just initial.
Yeah, and then just initial second page. And then just sign that.
Declaration of the complaint?
No.
Right, you can go straight in.
No, no, drop on the screen. You will have the scroll up. So, I'll put in my phone.
Would it be better, excuse me, chairman, but because you can at your discretion have participation from people like tree wardens, but it is split into the different items to allow Joyce to speak rather than the ones because she said one is complicated.
I should ask the chairman if I can speak.
Okay.
Okay, both trees are one to my...
Planning out for the bench, you just remember what?
Which what bit did you want, Joyce?
This is the difficult one.
This is, uh, I had to look at it. Uh, question?
Uh, uh, do you want me to speak?
Yes.
Right. This one is a difficult one because there's so many trees. I had to ring up and find out why it was forged in Catmouth and then suddenly it changed to sixteen Catmouth. But sixteen Catmouth has got, Catmouth Park Road has got more trees in it. Number four is a compressus, or selenite, and that nearly, that is asking for it to be felled. And yes, I would agree with that, it's big. What number's that for? Do you want to go through all of these or what?
Well...
The cedar, the two lower branches on the cedar, which is one, two, and three, those are actually very close to the house. And you know what cinders are, when the snow...
Yeah, the roots.
The snow hits the branches and the branches come down. So, I go on with that sorting out the tree. And so, all of them are okay, really. So, there's nothing really. There's an ash tree up here to the bridge, number five. We remove one limb because the worms actually perch on it and deposit on... Actually, and deposit their droppings onto the bridge. The second one was six, seven, six and seven. And the third, to be, ought to be felled because they've bifocated in the trunks and they're all diseased. So, really, there is no problem. But if anybody wants to ask me any questions, please do.
What's more?
Number four.
Just to speak, is that the reason for it to come down?
Inasmuch as that it is leaning, it is very near to the fence. It's big and it really does need to come down, in my opinion. There we go.
Here, Joyce, is there any preservation orders on any of the trees?
All of them.
They all preserve?
That's a conservation area.
Yeah.
And they've all got TPOs on them and that's why they're with us tonight.
Martin?
Yeah, I have a problem with the agenda item because nobody actually told me that it was number sixteen and it's, this has been published as number fourteen. So, I don't, I don't think we can legally consider this item this evening because it's the wrong information on the agenda.
Is number fourteen the main...
It's somewhere in the plan. Yes, I spoke to, I spoke to the owner of the planning.
So, why wasn't this corrected?
On the third page, it says, by the tree surgeon, it does say house from...
Oh, says it changed sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen.
Yeah, Jason, it's on fourteen sixteen.
Yeah, it's on number four.
Did you see that?
Oh, yeah, it may be on those documents, but I went to look at number fourteen.
Yeah, it was on the website anyway, so. And it's got the number, the number relates to sixteen.
But when we, when we went to training, we were told we can only consider what's on the agenda.
Yeah, but I mean, that's not...
And the agenda's incorrect. No, no, let's not say that's not. We've been asked to consider various tree wards of fourteen Catmouth Park.
If you looked on the planning, if you checked it on the planning, it does relate to sixteen.
It may do, but the agenda says number fourteen and I relied on our tree warden giving the advice because I'm not a tree expert.
You have a vote on it anyway.
We can't just have a vote on it. It's a, it's an item which is incorrect on our, on our agenda.
Well, I have a proposal, proposal in mind. We, we recognize that it is sixteen and we had a look at, uh, I had a look on the website, it's in Joyce's bit. So...
Well, I, I don't think you can ask for a proposal. This is a legal document and it clearly states on there number fourteen.
So, what are you going to do, not make a comment at all?
We can't because this is wrong.
If you don't make a comment, it'll just go through anyway, so.
I'm just saying that we need to make sure we get our agenda correct. You know, it's, it's, if you want another scenario, chairman, if, if it said that we wanted to spend five thousand pounds and actually we wanted to spend fifty, we couldn't have...
Yeah. Yeah, well, during it, we couldn't...
I was the next thing, well, suspend it.
Yes, suspend it.
So, suspend it.
Yes.
We can, as chairman, we can actually view number four because it's fourteen Catmouth.
But I don't have that information.
Well, same.
But I don't have it. We're not given it.
It's same.
I don't...
Fourteen.
Yes, but most of it relates to number sixteen. It was the first thing you said. It's not your problem. It should be whoever prepared this, which is a legal document.
You can pass the number four because it's same. From now on, I take my word for it. Then do my own.
Well, this is why we must supposed to be in the situation where there's hidden documents. It quite clearly says that in the rules as well. We, we're supposed to be provided with all the relevant documents so that we can make an informed decision.
Is the only one in number fourteen, number four?
Sorry, I've switched off what?
Is the only tree in number fourteen?
It's number four.
Number forty, all the others are sixteen.
Yeah.
Do you have the option to pass number four?
No, I'm just getting the rule in mind.
Because the thing I'm going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that to make sure that everything's transparent is to put a note in the minutes and say that whilst the agenda quoted number fourteen, all supporting papers quoted number sixteen. And I did quite clear to you in the minutes how we've done it because, as you say, if we don't comment on it, our sincere will pass it anyway. But taking Martin's point, if we make it clear in the minutes that we have considered both, despite the agenda saying fourteen, I think that's transparent to anybody.
Yeah.
I expect if that's a red light during it, but obviously retrograde is advised.
That's what we should do.
We can, we can just solution anyway.
Well, we just...
Paul, John.
What I was going to suggest, Alison, was that to make everything transparent and correct was that we put a, in the minutes, the fact that whilst the agenda said number fourteen Catmouth Park Road, all the supporting papers and information related to both fourteen and sixteen and therefore they were considered together.
And were given.
Then that clarifies why you gendered it wrong and also clarifies that where the information is both fourteen and sixteen.
We need to vote on that proposal. So, our second, Mr. Mills, on that.
Okay, all those are bad.
Number two.
No, we didn't vote on the...
We've just voted on the clarification. No, no, we've just voted on the clarification. We haven't voted on the item.
Yeah, it has to be...
Okay, we've voted on the... I propose that we...
Hold on a second. I'll propose it.
Same.
Who's that?
Paul, you're there.
We're going to sway the line.
And I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining. Don't let me talk.
Please. But I'm, I am happy that you put in the, to correct what was wrong.
Yeah, Catmouth Farm, that's in the law. Can you comment on that?
Sorry, I've switched on, sorry.
Can you comment on that? Catmouth Farm, I think you're on the right screen.
Yeah, this is quite, quite an easy one. In fact, you don't need me here, really. These are just overhanging branches in somebody else's garden. Reduce the maples and feeler overhanging into the garden and re-follow a lime tree. We're actually keeping a lime tree. Thank you.
You've got the other question?
No, you, you don't have a problem, Mrs. Lucas, with it?
No.
Do you have a proposal for that?
To accept.
Paul, you better. We have one, uh, called the Royal. This is the access, isn't it?
Yeah.
Actually, they've actually tried it out for so long.
Can I ask you how far, Paul, looks around?
It's two miles outside of the... I can't see this on the website. Sometimes it went down wrong.
On the first thing that you put up, Alison, it showed a tree in a box. Does that mean that the tree is going to be felled? If they're creating an entrance there, I assume it's the red. Because I, I didn't actually go up to this one because it was too far for me to walk other places on Sunday.
Do you look this way or not?
Okay. I had a look, uh, but some of the ground has broken down a lot, so I didn't get much information on it. And that's what I haven't seen, the website, I don't have a lot.
It's, it's not very easy to get things to...
No, sometimes, yeah, sometimes.
Do you know what's going on now? What's going on now? Is this a new one?
I don't know, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it at all. What, what it is, they proposed to, what I can remember, they proposed to move the...
The electric access?
Yes. Hundred yards, hundred yards further down to get better access and better views on traffic. Traffic could run there about sixty mile an hour. And what they've done, they've tried it for a while. They made, they've already made the access under one, a hundred meters down the road and to try it out and see if they can improve it. And the former exits improved it quite a bit. They can get out to there, if you're seeing. So, now it wants to make it the, it wants to block the one next to the cottage up and use, use the...
Looking at the top of those, very carefully, those banner, is that the current access? Because I noticed next to it, it says, it says replacement access on the next...
For line every new...
Of the hedge, no trees affected by the work.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I think that must be the original access, then that tree might be in the distance.
Yeah.
So, that's a new access, is it, inside a little black box? You know where Michael's going to net, between the trees, doesn't it? Yeah, it's a green box.
Right.
But if they're saying no trees will be affected, then I don't have a problem.
If it's going to be safer for traffic coming down the road.
It's already there, it's already there. And they've been trying it out for a while and now they want to make it...
Perspective.
Going out of open, which side is it going from, left or right, going out of it?
I don't know. Is it on the right?
On the right.
Mr. Nelson, it's green. One of, one of the many plans. Know all about it, right?
You know all about it.
Always.
Do you want to say something?
No.
Not allowed.
Oh, please, stop.
It's not fit for this park.
The thing about it, it will have to pass, pass through the police and the authorities anyway to make sure the sway's around and everything counts. So, I mean, all we do is make a comment, but it's a doggy to move it. Anybody have any more questions?
Sorry, I'm not supposed to continue.
No, he's breaking the law.
Can I have someone to propose that we pass it?
Yes, subject to highways, I heard. And, and also, if it is relevant, that it is a safety...
It should be a safety.
Yeah. And I'd be very happy because we don't want crashes on that road.
No, so he's second to him.
With that comment, if that's okay with everybody.
Just give a better chance to the traffic at sixty mile.
Yes, and that, and that they consider it is needed for safety. For reasons.
Yeah, do we have a vote to...
Did we get, I was, did I propose that separately?
No, I've pulled down proposing.
All right, and I just said, were you happy with that petition? Yes, okay, just checked, double-checked, so no problems. So, we're both on it.
Yeah.
I'm in doubt as well as you.
Yeah. So, you're on.
I, I don't think highways would let them do it.
Did one of them do it to them last year?
Yes, they're quite strict.
This is another one, I couldn't get all the information.
Sorry, I'm not real good.
That's where we're going to have to vote the disorderly conduct.
Because it's going to be cool speed, you know?
Yes, unfortunately.
It's great, yeah.
It's one of Ratman's flattest hills, I think.
I mean, this is only for the sun, if you know, just go ahead.
I, I do like the name Spinney because I was born here and our first house was number one Spinney.
There's a lot to talk about this one, maybe, maybe taking, moving me next.
Right, so basically that's it.
That's all, that's all. Uh, we don't know how far back, do we know how far back it is from the road?
There isn't much, actually, when I watch that, it's almost over to the field. There's not much space there anywhere.
No. We need it, putting right back off the, right back off the road.
Oh, there you go, look.
Road is very...
So, it's going to be, so it's going to be on the side anyway. So, this can be as you, as you come in on the road, it's going to be there.
Do you want to talk about it, everyone?
Martin? Just as you approach.
So, it is well back off the road.
Yes, I can't vote on this, but I can comment.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'll get into trouble. It's obviously people know I object to it. I, I don't like the words built with honesty and integrity. As we were told, they were going to be green, eco-friendly houses. And they look like ordinary houses today.
Well, that's the other side of it.
And affordable. Anyway, that was said at the Jupins where I was cross-examined by a barist.
Might have, um, those things in the roof.
So, the time, so the time.
It don't look like it.
Well, it just depends on the construction. Probably are eco-friendly to got, say, six inch of Kingspan insulation in that.
But it's a two-way sign, more taken that way, more taken that way. Plus avoiding the tree.
Yeah. That's why we put it there, I think, so you can see more plants.
So, it's going to be, you...
Do I have a proposal for that? Second?
I can't vote.
Suppose up on the second, it's going to happen anyways.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, shall I show it?
I just do like the buildings in the first place, but there we go, that's the next one.
Can you read it?
Yeah. I'm thinking, yeah.
So, three more steps.
This is a similar story, eight, Victory Road, it's detached, isn't it?
Right, so it's quite big.
When's Victory Road?
Victory Road is across from the park.
No, 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 it's here, which is...
That's Victory Road.
So, there's an existing garage, isn't there? I've just seen it.
It's existing garage, that's what we turned into an extension.
Right.
And then they do the, uh, a new garage, detached, which is an old thing.
Where would that go then? There's not room for another detached garage.
No, it's on the side, so that's why I couldn't get a plan for that.
What, here?
I couldn't get a plan for that, where it would go.
That's, that's quite a, that's quite a lot of stuff for trees, isn't it?
No, see, it's up there. That's okay if they...
There's quite a lot of, um, stuff going to come down here to make it without...
It's a, it's a old, old frame garage, it's wooden, that's a wooden one. It's a plant of that, the garage and the extension. Now, that's a garage.
Yes.
They buy them and keep them.
Yeah, well, it's actually, yeah, but it's going to make a big impact on, on ice.
It's all nice for it, yeah.
At the moment.
The, the garage that, if you show the other plant, the garage that's there at the moment, which is going to make the extension, it's just a flat wood garage. Yeah, whereas, yeah, this is the extension from this side and the, uh, which you...
The new garage, was we then doing quite a good job.
Yes. It's a nice extension.
Do you have, Alison?
Do you have to send a footprint?
Propose the view of the front because I couldn't get this to work on line. Because I want to see whether there's access being created. So, I couldn't find...
Are you saying some of the other one you just showed?
Which one?
Yeah, all of it.
But I, I wanted to know if there was anything there that said about access to the garage because there'll be a lot of trees to see. Is there going to be a new, what I'm trying to find out is if there's going to be a new drive.
Over in the shop going, yeah. That's it then, Martin. It's on the little window.
And I know this, I know the extension, but what I'm saying is that when I couldn't find out anywhere on the things that I could see, whether the new garage was going to create a new drive through, as Mr. Elliot said, a quite a nice garden and they, and that's why I would object to it if, if there is. And that's why I said, is there a front elevation proposed, which would clearly show an open?
Well, you mean the garage showing that?
Yeah, how a, the access in the garage, yes, the new garage.
No, I couldn't find one to show the new garage.
Can you show it on the left or right? That doesn't show it.
It doesn't show it, this is the extension.
You're going to do it, please.
We know it's going to be on the left, so I wondered are they going to be creating a drive across the front of the property or are they creating a new access, but there's nothing to show that.
I don't think, logically, the garage on the left, I'm saying.
Do not, do not be getting a new access, that's a proposal to go across the front.
Do you reckon?
I would think so.
It would be nice to see them.
Then it's too complicated.
Not just, we can't just guess.
Additional ones, either, that's it?
Yeah, we said, we're not, yeah.
It's hard to make a decision, you need to vote.
Is that a ground kind of thing?
You don't have to have planning on a single garage.
If that you would think.
Or building it.
Well, you do because they're bringing it to us. So, if they didn't need planning, we wouldn't be sitting here.
I'm just saying, by law, that's probably why they haven't put it on. Because by law, you don't need planning on a single garage.
So, why are they...
Even if it means a new access, then...
Ah, well, that's a different matter.
Which isn't clear.
No. But it would, if they're going to bring the new access, they will actually have to apply for it. They haven't applied for it, so we're not talking about that at the moment.
There's nothing?
No. So, we, we're actually...
It's just that, is what you're saying?
Yes. That's why it's said that, yeah, it's said, you don't have to have planning on it, it's just, it's just a purchase.
I suppose to, to acknowledge it's a, it's a hassle.
It is a project, but if you have...
They're applying to the garage, so there's no, do you think that's how you're going to do it?
Do you have a detached door?
But it looks like quite a big garage. And it quite clearly says on this agenda item, it is a side and rear extension, detached garage.
It says, it says it's...
It's the same one, I think it would be fresh maintenance, it's all...
That's what I, when I go to tackling, I thought.
Same one, it's the same one, same one.
Yeah, it's the same, I have it here.
So, they're going to drive across the front?
Yeah, they'll make a...
A large branch, perhaps a branch.
Hopefully just the ground.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't, okay, they don't have to, they shouldn't do that.
Okay.
So, do you want to propose?
Anyone want to propose passing it?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it because it's, it's a small...
It'll improve the...
It's a small, and I don't know, it's a small, ugly, old house.
Yeah, it'll improve the... Yeah, it'll improve the house.
And it will fill up a bit of a property. I don't, I don't, I've looked at other properties, which we shouldn't take into consideration, but I don't see what they're doing. It's a massive.
So are you going to propose it?
I will propose it.
Second?
I don't, I don't have a problem. It's not a big new.
Oh, you're fair there.
One, two, three.
Then they'll, they'll probably come back to us and say we want an access.
Yeah, just write it down a bit, we go.
At the moment, yeah.
Sit down, thank you.
Okay, yeah, maybe it's finished.